Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting on Wednesday, January 18th, 2017. At this time, we ask you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, while we're standing, I would like to mention the following individuals who passed away during the past week. First, Aunt Lima. Aunt Lima owned Ale Refrigeration, and probably a number of people in town remember him because of the business. Richard LaPlante was, he lived in Dyton, he lived in Taunton, but when he was living in Dyton, he was very active when his sons were in Troop Forty-Five, the troop that has had so many Eagle Scout projects. And Paul Octolek, who just recently passed away. Paul is a longtime federal worker. He was active at St. Nicholas. He served on the Financial Advisory Committee at St. Nicholas with me, and he was active in other events. So I would request a moment of silence.
Approval of the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the following minutes be approved. Special meeting, December 15th; regular meeting, December 21st; regular meeting, December 28th, all in 2016; and the minutes of the meeting with the Superintendent of Schools on January 11th, 2017.
I second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it. That motion carries unanimously.
Very busy.
Just bear with us while we sign these. That was like that magic game, you know, with the ball. Next on the warrant, next will approve the warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I move that warrant 29A-17 in the amount of $81,217.56 payroll, and warrant 29B-17 in the amount of $96,341.85, both dated January 18th, 2017, be approved.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That motion carries unanimously. Correspondents?
We do have a question.
Today, we have a piece of correspondence from the Department of Conservation and Recreation, and it's addressed to Recreation Department, and they've passed this along for us to read for the public. As of right now, there is a, there is one free pass in the Rec Department that any resident may come and ask for the use of it. This pass will allow people to explore all the Massachusetts State Parks and share their experiences. All you'd have to do is go down and see Heidi Swist in the Park and Rec Office, ask, sign out for it, and you're allowed to use that for a day. This mass pass, as it's called, entitles the bearer to free parking for one vehicle, excluding buses or vans for, you know, multi, multi-people, at over 50 facilities in the Massachusetts State Park System that charge a deuse parking fee. For those that may want to purchase one, you can purchase it as a Massachusetts resident for $60 for the year. If you have any questions or need more information, please call the Park and Rec Department, Heidi Swist, or you can contact Sophie Travacanti by phone at the Department of Conservation and Recreation at (617) 626-1451. Or if you just need a little more information, please call the Selectmen's Office, and we'll transfer you to the Park and Rec Department. Next, the announcements. Tonight's announcements. Trash bags, shops, disposal containers, and recycling stickers are all for sale at the Board of Selectmen's office. Call (508) 669-6431 for more information. Burning season is January 15th, 2016, through May 1st, 2017. No. January 15th, 2017, through May 1st, 2017.
That makes sense.
Permits may be obtained at Dyton Fire Station, 300 Main Street, for $10. Please make your checks payable to the Town of Dyton. There is a winter parking ban in effect from November 1st through April 1st of each year. No parking is allowed on any street during this time. Landfill stickers are available only at the transfer station during regular hours on Tuesdays and Saturdays. Payment is by check only. Again, make your checks payable to the Town of Dyton for $15. Registration is required for the vehicle being permitted, and remember, stickers are not transferable. Please check the town website for updates during all snow emergencies. The Greater Alabro, Taunton Home Consortium has funding available to help first-time home buyers or owner-occupied rental properties in need of rehabilitation. For first home, first-time home buyers, please call Pro Home at (508) 821-2514, or for the owner-occupied rental property rehab, call Jim Owlen at (508) 821-1093. Senator Mark Pacico will not be holding office hours at Town Hall for the next few months. If you do need assistance, please call his office in Taunton at (508) 822-3000. The Town Clerk's Office asks you to please complete your town census and return them as soon as possible. Nomination papers for the annual town election are now available at the Clerk's Office. The deadline for reports to be included in the 2016 Town of Dyton Annual Report is January 30th, 2017. And the food bank distribution will be held on January 21st, 2017, here at the Dyton Town Hall lower level. And I do have one that our illustrious Cable Committee, Mr. Ed Only, Chairman, has asked that we now announce that anyone who may be interested in joining the Cable Committee and has any kind of experience whatsoever, even if it's very little, please contact or stop by the Board of Selectmen's Office, fill out a form, and we'll forward the form to Mr. Ed Only. They are looking for people who may be interested in enjoying all that they do down there in the Cable Station. The last announcements will be the elected officials whose terms are expiring. These are the, this is the list of the elected officials whose terms will expire in April We have a three-year seat on the Board of Assessors. We have a vacant seat on the Board of Selectmen for three years. We have two open seats on the Dyton Rehoboth School District, School Committee, each one of those for three years. We have a five-year vacancy on the Housing Authority, a three-year vacancy on Parks and Recreation, one seat for five years on the Planning Board, one seat for three years as a Public Library Trustee, one seat for three years as a Sewer Commissioner, and the only seat for one year as a Town Moderator. Again, all these nomination papers are available at the Town Clerk's Office. They are available until 5:00 PM on Thursday, February 16th, 2017, when they must be turned in to, again, the Town Clerk. Full business?
No full business.
No full business. New business. First on the agenda is to review, discuss, and act to award the bid for appraisal services on Center Street Sidewalk Project, and I ask that my colleague, Mrs. Gulat, do the honors.
Drum roll.
We, I sent out letters to three different appraisers to ask them to submit a proposal and a cost estimate to do the appraisals of property on the South Side of Center Street in conjunction with the extension of the sidewalk. Two of the appraisers that received a request were actually involved with, one was involved with the Berkeley-Dyton and the Old Somus Avenue Bridge, and the other one was involved with the Brook Street Bridge. Only one appraiser returned a proposal, and that is Claude A. Giroux, and Claude was the appraiser for the Berkeley-Dyton Bridge and the Old Somus Avenue Bridge. In reviewing his, the documentation he submitted, the total cost for the work is $2,995. And what this will entail is actually visiting the site, sites, I should say, the various lots, and contacting the property owners, and advising them what he's planning to do. If they wish to have discussions with him, they will be done individually so that they have privacy. He'll explain the process, and also, when he files his report, he will document how he arrived at the amount of money that would be offered to the property owners. Property owners have the, will have the option of donating the easements to the Town of Dyton or being paid for those easements. The, I want to explain to the property owners especially that Mr. Giroux is going to appraise the property. His appraisal will not include things like shrubs and bushes. Most of the flowering shrubs and bushes that are on the design plan to be removed or relocated are actually located almost on the corner of Center Street and 138, where the professional building is. I have contacted Bristol County Agricultural High School, Mr. Dempsey, Superintendent Director, said that they would like to set up the plans, and I sent photographs so that they could see where the shrubs and bushes are that need to be either relocated or removed, and he was going to give that to his agriculture and landscaping departments. So they will be working on that and giving us an idea what it would cost to take care of the removal or damages for taking up some of those plants and replanting or whatever has to be done. So what we're looking at right now is $2,995 for Mr. Giroux for his contract, and I'll have more information once we get information back from the Aggie School. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve the contract with Claude Giroux for appraisal services for these, excuse me, the South Side Center Street land appraisals in relationship to the extension of the sidewalk. The amount of money in the contract is $2,995.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
And we have the, we have two copies of the contract for signature here by the entire board. Put them all stuck together. I think so for that one and this one. While these are being signed, I just want to, for the benefit of the, any property owners that may be watching this tonight or see this later, statement of assumptions and limiting conditions. This report is subject, he means the report he's going to give us, subject to the following assumptions and limiting conditions. Claude A. Giroux, our appraisers who prepared this report and associate appraisers, if any, are not guarantors of value, utility, condition, or feasibility. The fee for this assignment and the client's obligation to pay for our services are in no way contingent upon the findings or conclusions as to value, best use, or feasibility. The obligation of the client to pay for our professional services on delivery of the opinion, estimate, or recommendation is in no way contingent upon acquisition, disposition, sale, financing, closing, use, zoning, court decision abatement, or verdict, or any other action or event related to the property. It is an express condition of this report that the appraiser is not required to give testimony or appear in court because of having made this appraisal, with reference to this property in question, unless arrangements have been previously made therefore. The values reported herein are an opinion only and not warranted as or a representation of the fact. Any distribution of the value of the report applies only under the program of utilization as outlined herein. A sketch of this report is included to assist the reader, and that's part of the attachment. The legal description furnished us is assumed to be correct, and he did pick up a copy of the plans that were drawn for the sidewalk, so he obviously knows who owns the property and how many feet in front of each property are involved with the sidewalk. The appraiser is not an attorney at law. The client is advised to consult with his attorney on general rules of law as they apply to the property in question, and the client in this case is the Town of Dyton. These are pretty standard terms, and as I say, we have, we have a good history with Mr. Giroux for the projects that were done. And I will just add, because he mentioned that about, should there be a need to go to court, we haven't run into anything like that because the appraisals that we've gotten from the two appraisers we've had have been accepted by the property owners as reasonable and fair, but should anything happen that would result in legal action by the property owner against the town, this proposal from Mr. Giroux makes it clear that his, where he subpoenaed to go to court, his testimony and the amount of time spent is outside of the contract, so there would be an additional fee involved, which is standard. As I said, we've never had to deal with that, but I just mentioned that because it is a clause in the contract.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you very much, Selectmen.
One of those can be mailed to, there's two originals, so one can be mailed to Mr. Giroux, so we can set up this schedule. If any property owners have any questions at all, please give me a call at Town Hall, but as I said, he will be in touch with you, and you'll have an opportunity to discuss his work with him if you choose.
Next, under new business on the agenda, review, discuss, and act on the National School Choice Week proclamation. This is something that I've personally been involved with for the last two years. This is a, that time of the year that the Town of Dyton School Choice Week runs from January 22nd to January 28th, and it comes from the Andrew Campanella, President of National School Choice Week, and asks that a declaration be forthcoming from the Town of Dyton to join in with, there's a few hundred more towns and cities if you ever want to take a look at them, you know, pages of them that do submit a proclamation, and the proclamation reads as such. Whereas all children in the Town of Dyton should have access to the highest quality education possible, and whereas Town of Dyton recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in the Town of Dyton to be successful adults, and whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of the Town of Dyton, and whereas Town of Dyton is home to a multitude of excellent education options from which parents can choose for their children, and whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community, and whereas our area has many high-quality teaching professionals who are committed to educating our children, and whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options, now therefore the Board of Selectmen do hereby recognize January 22th through 28th, 2017, as Town of Dyton School Choice Week, and I call this observance to the attention of all our citizens. It'd be signed by the three members of the Dyton Board of Selectmen.
I'd like to ask a question about that. A lot of the statements in there I absolutely agree with, but I'd be remiss if I didn't A lot of the phrasing in that proclamation, to me, sounds like a lot of the arguments that were used during the, I believe it was question, the school choice and the charter school question that was on the last ballot on November 8th. Does this have, does anyone know if this has anything to do with that? That was about school choice, as you remember.
There was no reference.
No, it was, I thought the, I thought the...
That was for charter schools.
It was charter schools.
Yeah, but they were saying, one of the arguments was, a lot of kids, a lot of children in inner cities are forced to go to failing schools, so one of the arguments was that they needed more choices, i.e., charter schools.
Charter schools, alright.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure that this had nothing to do with that.
Different programs. Obviously charter schools are freestanding, I mean, we got them all around, not in Dyton, but we, obviously there are Fall River and the other places. School choice, as far as I know, Dyton Rehoboth belongs to that, and you have the opportunity, if they have space, I think they only have, they allocate so many spots, I believe, and if you opt to go there and, you know, you get in, it's, you're going to a public school at your choice. I think they have to provide their own transportation.
Their own, right.
Yeah. But it doesn't matter if you're intercity or very rural or whatever, if you're accepted, you've got to get yourself there, and your parents have to get you there. But that does open educational opportunities for other children. Obviously, where charter schools are, they're usually built in neighborhoods and they service, they're not limited to the neighborhood, but they draw from the neighborhood, and it is a completely separate educational program, has to meet state requirements, but it's not the same as us having a elementary or a K-8 school with a school committee and all that. And I think the opposition to charter schools was that it takes state aid that would normally, there's only one big part of state aid, and that a charter school, or charter schools get state aid, and it comes out of, or affects the funding, reimbursements, Chapter 70, to all of the public schools. I think that's why, that's what the opposition to it was. But school choice, that is a different program. But they did, they did use, they did use the choice, yes, as part of the selling point.
It was a little confusing, isn't it?
They were trying to get people to support more charter schools because it would provide choice. Well, there is school choice out there already, and if parents want to look into it, they will find the schools that offer it.
It's just another option, right? Like charter schools were an option. We can have students in Taunton come to our middle schools for a variety of courses that are available here that are not there, and it's, again, school choice, they can, they can come here. So it's, it's just another option.
And I think, I think each year the school committee has to approve being a school choice facility for that ensuing year, and I think the other requirement is that if you have accepted school choice students and you decide not to offer it anymore, you must let those who are in there complete their entire, whether it's the rest of, through a senior year, or if it's a certain program or something, you must allow them to be able to finish it. You just can't say, "We're not doing it anymore, go somewhere else." But that's what it's about. Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we sign the proclamation commemorating School Choice Week.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The motion carries unanimously.
Will we make a, do we have to make an official announcement next week or anything like that?
No, we have, we've done it now.
I'm really going to date myself now and just say, "Boy, is she old."
I would never say that.
I remember, well, I'm talking about they.
Oh, oh.
Virtual people out there.
That word.
But I think there's a lot of people out there who are going to remember this, too. When I was in, it was called grammar school to begin with. We didn't have elementary and, we did have a junior high, finally, but it was a one-to-eight school, and so it was a grammar school. And the state regularly published proclamations, and it seemed like almost every week, at the beginning of class, one day during the week, the teacher would read the proclamation of the week. It could be the, also back in those days, we didn't have President's Day, we had George Washington's birthday. Now, Abraham Lincoln's birthday, there was a proclamation, and you, the teacher would read that, but there was no holiday for Abraham Lincoln. George Washington, they would read the proclamation about George Washington, and we would have a day off from school. It's usually, it was usually the February vacation week. Or, back in those days also, we didn't have Mondays. Whenever the holiday fell, which in the case of George Washington was the 22nd of February, that's when the holiday fell. So nowadays, they're Mondays for the most part, and they fall during school week. But we had proclamations read on a regular basis, and whatever the Secretary of the Commonwealth issued, it came down, and it issued, it came down, and it was part of the regular school day program. Of course, this was also when you started class in the morning with a reading from the Bible, and the teacher would read it, you would then recite the Lord's Prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance, unless you had reasons not to recite the prayer or say the pledge, in which case you were expected to just stand and just quietly stand. You weren't obligated to do it, but, because there were some children in my classes that I remember did not salute the flag for whatever reason. By the time you got to high school, it was an honor, quite frankly, to be asked to go to the principal's office, read the morning exercises, which again, that stuff.
Not for me.
All of you people that went to Dyton High School, you know exactly what I'm talking about. But anyhow, are you seeing your opening exercises?
No.
Anyhow, at Dyton High School, and actually at Dyton Rehoboth too, if you were asked to go to the principal's office to read the, I'll call them the opening ceremonies and the morning announcements, because when you got through with the Pledge of Allegiance, you were given a typewritten sheet that was prepared by the Principal Secretary, and you read whatever announcements there were. And all of that changed my senior year at Dyton Rehoboth. We still had the Pledge of Allegiance, but you know, by then religion in the schools was, oh, you can't, no Bible reading and no prayers or any of that stuff. And I even remember when the phrase "under God" was inserted into the Pledge of Allegiance. Now, are you going to tell me, you probably don't. Dean?
I think so.
I think so. So anyhow, this, we're talking about this proclamation, and I certainly remember that. And I know there's a lot of people in Dyton who graduated from Dyton High School, or attended Dyton High School, and that was, that was a routine every day.
You know, I know you think that you're kind of dating yourself, I actually think it was a good idea to do George Washington's birthday. The problem is that there, now, there are 44 other presidents who we need days for. So we, if we're going to do each one individually, we need to do them all. So we need 40 days, 45 days.
That's how the President's Day holiday came about. I used to think it was wrong. In my first grade, first grade classroom, my first grade teacher was Mrs. Catherine Murphy, who lived on Wellington Street in Dyton. Yes, Jim Murphy's wife. And hanging in the first grade classroom, on the back wall, we all faced the teacher, on the back wall, there were two huge pictures, photographs of Abraham Lincoln and George Washington. I always felt badly because we celebrated George, but I mean, Abraham Lincoln was an important president. But anyhow, we ended up with President's Day so that, you know, as time went by, all presidents are remembered, but...
I feel like individual is the way to go, because then you're really just thinking about the one person. I think that's the way, we should, they should rethink that.
That's a lot of days off.
Yeah, well, you know.
Well, not days off, but I think proclamations. There was, I remember the United Nations proclamation that came around every year, and I remember when they were making the United Nations flag, the blue flag, there was a flag being circulated, and it had a needle with white thread, and it made the rounds in the classroom, and each child was allowed to put a stitch in that flag. And I don't know if it was the, in, I don't know if it was the local Women's Club that are, group that was Daughters of the American Revolution, but in any, or a historical commission or society, I can remember as a little kid that big blue flag, and they came to each desk and they just put the needle in and then say, "Just pull it through," and then go to the next child and start the needle and tell them to pull it through, as a symbol of, obviously, the unity. But yeah, that was, that was something. That was really interesting.
Absolutely.
We did, I don't know, regardless of what your feelings are about religion in the public schools, I think there were a lot of traditions back then that also added historical value to events and individuals that were observed back then, and it's all gone away. It's, it's kind of sad that those kinds of things are not, children nowadays are not exposed to those kinds of things, because as I said, I felt bad for Abraham Lincoln. Looked at him every day and he didn't have his own, his own day, and yet I knew he was a very important president, but, but anyhow. So all of you that remember that, guess we're in the same age group.
Interestingly, while I was living as a graduate student in Texas, they brought back the good old tradition of teaching religion in the classroom, except it was taught as a science in Texas.
No kidding?
So you got both, you got your science and then you got your religion, yep.
In, in the public?
Yep.
Wow.
Yep. It was passed while I was there.
Wow, that's interesting.
Yep. Not sure if they're still doing it, but, because there were, there was a lot of opposition to it, but, you know, there are still states and people out there who, who, you know, don't see it the way, you know, some other people may see it, so, it was interesting, absolutely.
Finally, the last item under new business, review, discuss an act on the appointment of members to the Green Communities Grant Committee. I'm going to ask Selectmen Zografos, this is his little project, and he's got himself a, you know, a few very, very well-qualified, interesting applicants.
Absolutely. So again, I just wanted to, oh, here's where that is, I just wanted to remind everybody who may not have been here for, sort of, when we opened the discussion on a potential Green Communities Grant Committee, exactly what this committee, committee's mission would be. And basically, the mission is that the committee will be responsible for studying and creating what we call an energy baseline for the town, figuring out right now currently how much energy we are consuming, and then they will devise a five-year plan to reduce energy consumption by 20%, again, over five years. And so they'll do that by preparing a grant application, they'll submit it to the Department of Energy Resources, and if we, if the Town of Dyton satisfies all the necessary conditions and the plan passes scrutiny and muster, they would potentially designate us as a green community, and along with that would come with some grant funding, which could go to a variety of projects, not only already going along in things like the schools perhaps, but also maybe other different projects that the community, committee could rather, could come up with. But I think for the sake of the application, before it gets sent in, the committee should come together and come to a consensus on a plan for any spending of any potential funds that could be awarded, so. Should I go through the applications? Okay. So we have, from here, Jason R. Quinn, and Jason writes, "Dear Board of Selectmen, I hope everyone is doing well and excited about the recent yes vote for the new police station, I think the police may be. I'm writing this email to express my interest in joining the Town of Dyton's Green Communities Grant Committee. I feel I can be a very valuable asset in implementing this wonderful program in the Town of Dyton. In my day-to-day activities as the Director of Construction with WIN Development, one of my duties is to implement enterprise green programs," and there is a link, "in all of new construction and rehab projects. I'm very familiar in how the program is run, the requirements needed, and materials, equipment that are to be used to make this all happen. This program is very close, if not the same, to the mass green communities program Dyton is thinking about implementing. I also have very strong connections in the enterprise green community, including our very own green team at WIN Development. With that being said, I would love to continue to volunteer my time and help out the wonderful Town of Dyton and look forward to hearing from the board. Should you need any additional information or have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me at any time. Have a wonderful evening. Jason Quinn." This is an application from Brett Zografos, I'm sure you know who I am, so I don't need to go into detail. We have a application from Mr. Jonathan Gray, who, I'm not sure if folks remember, recently got his master's degree in sustainability science, kudos, Mr. Gray. He writes, "Board of Selectmen, attached you will find my application for appointment to the newly-formed Green Communities Grant Committee. I am excited to work toward energy efficiency in the Town of Dyton. Thank you for your consideration. Best, Jonathan Gray."
And here's Jonathan Gray of the Broad Coal Nature Trail.
He is, he is. Very involved in the community over the years, Mr. Gray. I won't read everything, but I will just highlight, he has advanced degrees in sustainability science, so he knows just a little bit about energy efficiency, certainly more than I do, that's for sure. He is the founder and director of a Gray's Greens Urban Farm, which is a sustainable farm. He's been a marketing intern, a farm intern, an Eagle Scout, as Selectmen Gulat just mentioned, and an all-around, just someone with a really bright future in sustainability. I received this from Mr. Connor Fergundes. I am interested in serving on your yet-to-be-formed Green Communities Grant Committee. I'm a lifelong resident of Dyton, graduated from DR with high honors, and studied philosophy at University of Massachusetts at Dartmouth for several years. I'm also a social, political, and environmental organizer, and I'm currently serving as acting co-chair for the South Coast Chapter of the Green Rainbow Party of Massachusetts, a party focused on peace, social justice, ecology, and democracy. While I may not be the most decorated person applying to serve on this committee, I love our town and our people, and I see the need and value for our transition to environmentally sustainable technologies. I hope you will consider me for a position on this committee. I believe I would be an asset for the town. Sincerely, Connor Fergundes." And last, but certainly not least, we have an application from Ms. Vicky Piazza, who is also on the Development and Industrial Commission, as well as the Town Administrator Committee. And she has given us her resume, she has experience working in aspects of planning while she was on the Planning Board in California, leadership experience. She also led, as Selectmen Gulat has mentioned several times since I've been elected, she also coordinated the Cleanup Day on Earth Day. So, so clearly she has organizational skills, and more than that, she has a passion for the environment. And so I'm not going to read every single thing that she's written here, but she has an established commitment, a knowledge of planning, and a, and a passion for environmental issues.
And she's on the Industrial and Development?
Yep. She's Chairwoman.
Mission. The only thing I would request is, can we invite them, those applicants, to come in? I know a couple, some of them I don't know, and if they could just come, hopefully, to the next meeting, and if it's okay, we could vote on them next week?
Absolutely.
I know that the gentleman on the, Mr. Quinn, he's on the...
Zoning Board.
Zoning Board? So he would be available, I would think, next week?
Yes. Yeah, zoning, zoning board is not meeting this month, so there'll be no conflict.
We can get him on to begin in, you know, the agenda.
Absolutely.
Have to keep him here all night.
Yeah.
Town Hall is so quiet tonight.
It is.
That's because there is a hearing going on at the middle school on a number of proposed developments and issues that would fall under that. But we don't even have a lot of street traffic tonight coming in.
No, they're all at the middle school.
Just had some going out, but coming in.
It's a one-way door, Mr. Chairman.
I would like to ask my fellow colleague, what would you feel comfortable with for applicants? I notice there's five there now. Is that, is that, are you leaning toward more or five? I know that it seems in the past that the more personnel that gets on a committee, there's more of a tendency for some to say, "Well, you don't need me tonight," and then all of a sudden you don't have a quorum, and the larger committees of seven, eight, 10 people seem to have the most problems. So I was just curious what you thought was...
I mean, just my personal opinion, I personally think since Selectmen Gulat had raised the issue, which I 100% agree with, and I think it was a fantastic suggestion, of having ad hoc expert members, who again, don't have to come to every meeting, but when there's an, an issue that requires specific expertise, I would, I think that would definitely be the way to go. So I'd be happy, again, just personal opinion, with five members, and then having, you know, perhaps an ad hoc member, such as Building Commissioner James Aguirre, who is, you know, invaluable, also maybe someone from the Water District, perhaps someone from Planning Board, because anytime you take up issues of bylaws and things like that, they're going to play a role in that, obviously. So that's my initial suggestion, and I do think Selectmen Gulat, because I think that is absolutely the way to go. And then you have your five core members and your ad hoc experts who don't have to come to every meeting, it'll be easier for them. That's just my personal...
Because you have, you have quite a variety of well-qualified people that you just read off.
Good experience.
It's a heck of a foundation right there.
Absolutely. And as far as the number one, we talked about this initially, I said five of seven.
Perfect.
Fine with me, whatever.
Yep.
Right, so we'll look forward to next week to act on it.
Okay, so I will make a motion to put on next week's agenda, to, first of all, we want to, before I make the motion, we will invite the five that have applied. Applications have closed, haven't they?
Yep, June 12th. June, January.
Yeah, I do that all the time. All right, I will make a motion that we place the appointment of members for the Green Communities Grant on next week's agenda and invite the candidates to come in.
I'll step down a second. Is there any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries unanimously. The only, the reason I did that, it was obvious that...
Of course.
Yours is in there. And we don't need to get ourselves into trouble.
Of course, Mr. Chairman. We have, we have our virtual folks watching, so we...
Oh, yes.
Virtual.
Next, on the agenda reports, we have a Police Station Progress Report sent over to us from Chairman of the Dyton Police Station Building Committee. This is, and I'll read this in its entirety, "A Monthly Police Station Progress Report, November, December to January 12, 2017. Since our last report on November 2, 2016, the debt exclusion ballot vote for the final stage of funding approval for the new 8,500-square-foot, single-story police station was set by the Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, January 10, 2017."
Isn't, it was actually the town clerk, as I understand, correct? She set the election.
What you set the date on it.
Yeah, based on her recommendation.
Based on the town clerk's recommendation.
Right, how it had to be, yeah.
The Building Committee set up an exterior sign adjacent to the police station, thanking everyone for their support and for a reminder to vote on January 10. We also acquired a poster board rendering of the new police station, front exterior and floor plan, which was set in the entryway of the hallway of Town Hall. The ballot voting took place on January 10 at the elementary school, and the debt exclusion funding was approved by the town residents. The committee wants to sincerely thank the town residents for their support and for the many favorable social media comments for the building project, and Dyton police officers and their staff, and dispatches. The committee also wants to thank all the Town Hall staff and individuals that set up and worked to once again make voting at the elementary school a success. The committee can now move forward with redesign and construction of a new police station, built and sized for professional functionality for decades to come. And this was sent to us by Chairperson of the Dyton Police Station Building Committee, Mr. Dennis McGee. Thank you, Mr. McGee. Thank you, Mr. McGee.
I'd like to thank not only Mr. McGee, but the entire committee. I know Mr. McGee was kind to allude to the kind social media comments. They were not all kind, so I definitely wanted to...
They were all kinds.
All kinds, exactly. So I wanted to thank Mr. McGee for being so perseverant. I'd like to thank the committee for being extremely patient and my hat goes off to them and personally speaking, whatever you guys need, you know, I'm gonna do whatever I can to help the project move along. Thank you.
And I will add to that, the perseverance of the committee to hang in there, there's been many ups and downs and the, the last downfall of the high of getting the approval and then going out to bid and finding out the bids were too high. So that was a letdown and it was, okay, we gotta go back to the drawing board and start over again. And this is an unpaid committee that has literally spent years working on this. And for those of us who have heard about, we need a station that's been going on since before I was on the board the last time, I'm just happy everyone hung in there. I'm happy that the townspeople came out and supported it. It is a big expense, but I think the recognition of the need was there. So thank you very much.
And finally, I'd like to thank all these 700-plus registered voters that came out to vote. This is, it wasn't a landslide by any means. I believe it was passed by 42 votes, which is a strong indication of the old adage that every count votes. So thank you very much for the 700-plus people that came out that realize your count does, your, your vote does count. It was a, it turned out that, that, I know myself, I didn't personally think would reach that number, but congratulations for those that, that took the opportunity. And next, do we have any acknowledgements? No public input.
I would just mention, I should've said this at the beginning of this meeting, the Board of Health meeting that was scheduled tonight was canceled because the only agenda item we had was accepting the minutes of the previous month's meeting. And there were no inspectors' reports tonight. I was going to ask the Building Commissioner to give us some information on some questions that, that had arisen, but none of them are pressing and the Building Commissioner is also at the meeting I mentioned at the middle school. So we will, again, schedule for the third Wednesday in February and we'll have, I know we'll have a set of minutes, but we'll, we'll see what else comes down the pike and, and have the meeting if it's needed.
We'll have the results of Punks at Tony Phil, so...
Central Point Health.
That's a weather.
Well, they haven't done away with Phil yet. And I remember Phil when I was a little kid.
Well, we could also form a committee that could study the structure and function of Mr. Phil and watch his every move so that we get the updates ASAP.
There may be one...
I'm sorry I brought this up.
There may be one in Dayton that is significant who should be recognized.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Probably been around longer, too.
Absolutely. And with the Aggie School here, they must have woodchucks.
Absolutely. There used to be one that used to eat the vegetable garden in the backyard. I know they exist in this town, for sure.
This is a good topic for Mr. Ferry, our game on to investigate. I have to speak to him about that.
You have to look at the street list and see if there's a Mr. William Murray here. With that said, it's been a long day, folks, as you can tell. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Cable, thank you very much for your broadcast tonight. And again, one last reminder, the Cable Committee, they have quite a time down there. So they're looking for a couple or whoever may be interested, if you are interested and getting to look at the whole studio down there and maybe be a part of how, how you get to watch presentations on Channel 9. And you wanna be a part of it, stop by the office, pick up a form and we'll send your name right off to Mr. Only. Again, thank you, Cable, and good night, ladies and gentlemen. See you next week.